Thank you. And we're going to call the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners, Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation Joint Workshop to Order. And I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank, first off, I want to thank Palm Beach State College for hosting us in this lovely venue here. And I would like to also welcome our delegation from back down from Tallahassee. Thank you all. Good to see you. And for those of you like me that are still recovering from yesterday's loss by the 49ers, that was painful to watch for three hours. But, you know, what can we say Eagles, you know, we'll see you at the Super Bowl, I guess. Anyways, I really appreciate everybody's time this morning. We have a lot to cover and just welcoming you all. And I will now ask our delegation chair, Senator Polsky, if you have any comments? And would you like to introduce your members as well to us?
Thank you so much, Mayor Weiss. Hi, everyone. Thank you, President Parker and Palm Beach State College for having us in this beautiful center that I finally found again. We are delighted we could get this meeting together, just in the nick of time before we're fully in Tallahassee. So looking forward to a robust discussion this morning. I'd like to start by having our members introduce themselves. So I'm going to start on my left. I see Representative Waldron. Anyone else on your left? Okay. If you guys, you know, let's know where you're from, your area and staff and.
Sure, this is on. Okay. My name's Kathryn Waldron. I represent District 93, which is Wellington, West Lake Worth, and most of Green Acres. And my legislative aide, Glenn Strifer, is here. And my district aide, Roselle Gibbs, is also here. So thank you.
My name is.
Why don't we, why don't we mix and mingle? Let's do it.
Mix and mingle.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioner Baxter. I am District 6, so I represent Wellington, Royal Palm Beach, The Acreage, Loxahatchee, Belgrade, Pahokee, South Bay.
Good morning, everyone. State Representative Mike Caruso, District 87. It's great to be here. Thank you for Palm Beach State College for hosting this great event. I just wanted to mention to the mayor, I don't know how he sat and watched that game for three hours. It was painful to watch for 10 minutes. But anyway, my district runs from Manalapan, Hypoluxo, up to Jupiter, Palm Beach Gardens, from the ocean, all the way to the Turnpike. Great to be here.
Good morning, everybody. I am State Senator Bobby Powell Jr., representing Senate District 24, the north parts of Palm Beach County, going south from PGA Boulevard all the way down to, I believe, it's Lantana Road. We are the new Senate District 24. Here with me today is Malcolm Summons, my legislative assistant, and will be joined pretty soon by Ms. Diane Andre Esquire.
And my apologies, my district aide, Eva Sazanova, if you could stand up. Wave. I don't know if my legislative aide, Walter Boykus, is here, but he's not.
Hi again. I am State Senator Tina Polsky. I represent District 30. I have Boca Raton, and then the rest is Broward County, the northwest section. I am here with J.J. Piscadlo and Kariana Ingram, who are my district aides, and they're in the back, and they go to Tallahassee with me. So thank you guys for being here and keep going down the line.
Good morning again. I'm Greg Weiss. I am Palm Beach County Commissioner for District 2. I represent West Palm Beach, Haverhill, parts of Boynton Beach, Lantana, and Lake Worth Beach.
Thank you very much. I am State Senator Gail Harrell. I represent District 31, which includes parts of St. Lucie County, all of Martin County, and Jupiter, Jupiter Inlet Colony, Loxahatchee, Jupiter Farms, Juno, Palm Beach Gardens, Royal Palm, and all the way out to Pahokee. And I have with me my aide today, Carrie Lyra. Carrie, where are you? Way in the back over here. And Karen Sweeney will be here a little later. Thank you all so much. And by the way, go Chiefs.
Good morning. My name is Mac Bernard, County Commissioner for District 7. I do have my Chief of Staff, Will Nita Emanuel, who's here with me. And I represent the city of Delray Beach, Boynton Beach, the town of Hypoluxo, Lantana, Lake Worth Beach, the town of Palm Beach, Haverhill, most of West Palm Beach, Mangonia Park, Riviera Beach, Lake Park, and portions of unincorporated Palm Beach County. Glad you're here this morning.
Good morning. I'm Lori Berman, State Senator from District 26. I have three people here. I don't see Evelyn. Is she here? I have Kadidra, raise your hand, who's in, has an office in Belgrade, and Abby Ross and Daniel De La Grange are here also. And my district is south Palm Beach County, Boca, Delray, and Boynton Beach. Then it heads west, takes in Wellington, and Belgrade, and South Bay. Happy to be with you all today.
Good morning. I'm County Commissioner Maria Marino, District 1, second largest district, only to District 6 by landmass, that is. Palm Beach Gardens, Jupiter, North Palm Beach, Juno Beach, Toquista, Palm Beach Shores, Jupiter Inlet Colony, Singer Island, the north end of Palm Beach, and as Mac said, portions of unincorporated Palm Beach County. Happy to be here. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kelly Skidmore, State Representative for District 92, which is unincorporated portions of Boca Raton, Delray Beach, and Boynton. A lot less complicated. Somewhere between here and the parking lot is my legislative aide, Dr. Gwen Gonzalez. Oh, she's in the back. There she is waving.
Good morning. Thank you, President Parker, for inviting us to always enjoy coming to this beautiful campus. My name is Joe Casello. I'm the state rep for District 90, which includes sections of Lantana and Lake Worth, the cities of Boynton Beach and Delray Beach down to the Boca Line. Today with me, I have both my district aide, Brian Bees, and my legislative aide, Troy Grass. I think everyone would agree with me, our aides play a big part in our success and what we get done legislatively. And so very, very valuable to us, and we're glad to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Marcy Woodward. I represent District 4 for Palm Beach County. Southeast Palm Beach County, so it's Boca Raton, Boynton, Delray, and then I hug the coastline all the way up to Manalapan. We have 12 municipalities. With me this morning, I have Lucia Bonavita and Caitlin Joyce, and we're happy to be here.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Representative Rick Roth, District 94. My district is easy to explain. I'm west of the Turnpike from the Martin County line to Southern Boulevard, all the way out to 20 Mile Bend, and then continue on out to the Glades, including Belgrade, Pahokee, and South Bay. And people don't know this, but Belgrade is my hometown. I have with me Terry Mitsey, wave, my district aide. And Matt, I'm sorry, Will Poncel is my other district aide. He's on the way, but he actually got involved in a fender bender this morning. He's doing fine. His car is okay, but he should be here in a little bit. So very happy to be here. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm the newly appointed county commissioner for District 3, Michael Barnett. Today, I'm here with our senior administrative assistant, Dave Bernhardt. My district represents parts of West Palm Beach, Glen Ridge, Cloud Lake, Palm Springs, parts of Lake Worth Beach, Green Acres, unincorporated Palm Beach County, and I'm a proud alum of Palm Beach State College, when it was called Palm Beach Community College. Thank you, Dr. Parker, President Parker.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Gervonta Edmonds, and I have the honor to serve the best part of Palm Beach County in District 88, which covers Palm Beach Gardens, Lake Park, Riviera Beach, West Palm Beach, Mangonia Park, and a slither of Royal Palm Beach. Honored to be here.
Thank you. And I see Representative Gossett Seidman. You want to introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you. Pardon my lateness. I should have tried the new Boca Raton Figure 8 intersection. I would have been here quicker. I'm Peggy Gossett Seidman, District 91, which incorporates all of Boca Raton, Highland Beach, and a portion of the county east of 441 and south of Yamato. I'm very proud to be here. My legislative aide could not be here. He's on another project. And I'm proud to represent Boca Raton and Highland in the county. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, and welcome again. And I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Ava Parker, who is here with us this morning, and ask you if you have any remarks you'd like to share with us and maybe talk about some of your legislative priorities as well.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm so happy to host the delegation and our county commission today. And certainly to you and to Senator Polsky as the leader of the delegation, we are so blessed to, as an institution, to have leaders like yourselves who continue to support us and our initiatives. Certainly to Virginia Baker, our county administrator, so happy to have you as a partner in our work here in the county. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the folks who blessed us with the opportunity to serve you for your academic pursuits. So as Commissioner Barnett mentioned, and Representative Kelly Skidmore, former mayor, from Representative Mac Bernard, as well as our newer commissioner, Sarah Baxter, they're our alumni. Thank you so much for choosing Palm Beach State as a place for you to get your post-high school credential. And certainly, I ask you to encourage your kids, your neighbors, and your grandkids to join us in this endeavor. So this is a very special year for us in that Palm Beach State College is 90 years old in 2023. We were the first public community college that was established in the state of Florida. And so proud to be a part of this community and to lead the way in so many other ways. And since we're talking about leading the way, I thought it would be good to mention to you, well, first, let me tell you a little bit more about the college. Am I doing this right, guys? Am I pointing it right? So maybe you can help me, Dustin. I'm pointing. That's the one I'm clicking, right? I'm clicking the right one, guys. Don't let me be here by myself much longer, and it's not moving. I'm clicking the right one. You can head over there, maybe. It's fine. But just as a quick reminder, we're about, at about 40,000 students right now, and we have 130-plus programs. Our institution is, mirrors a community that we're about a third white, a third black, and a third Hispanic. I'd say to you that, you know, about $70 million in financial aid is awarded for our students right now. We're the fifth largest in the state, and we have a $1.1 billion economic impact on our Palm Beach County community. So we really feel that we are part of the infrastructure that helps to make our community work. I'll tell you an interesting fact. About 80% of our students, when they earn their credential, they stay right here in the county. So know that we believe that we are part of really makes, part of what really makes our county work. Thank you. Today, I want to talk to you a little bit about our legislative priority. It actually is an emergency response training center. You know, natural disasters are increasing in frequency and severity, and we have also hostile and cherished events around our whole country. And increasingly, public safety agencies are being tasked with responding to these emergencies that traditionally, they were not just within their scope of service. So we believe that there's time for additional training that will really show the importance of these agencies working together. And the concept is to create a facility that will allow all stakeholders to come together to train and plan for future events. So think of local police, fire, EMS, state, federal, USAR, FEMA, DMAD, FBI, and the U.S. military, all convening in one location so that when they have to come together for a natural disaster, they'll know that they've received a training to talk together. What my director of Fire Academy will tell you is that they're not used to talking to each other, so when they're thrown together, it doesn't work well, and we need it to work well during natural disasters. To give you some idea, currently in our Public Safety Department, there's been a growth of 125% since 2019. We currently have 673 students enrolled in that program. Our projected growth in three years, that'll go up 50 more percent, and in five years, it'll be 100% increase in the program. As I mentioned, there's a need for this work. Our current facility was established in 2013. You're in that complex now. And it's, there is not a purpose, and this facility was not really built for that type of training. Not for urban search and rescue, but certainly there's a demand for, and our current footprint is a little bit too small. We want to expand this training center and to create this world-class facility of instruction. It does not exist in the state of Florida today. In fact, the closest place that you can go for this kind of training, I think, is in Georgia, about 600, over 600 miles away, right? But there's also a great facility like this in Texas at the University of Texas. And so we're looking to model that idea, but make it much more accessible because it'll be here in the state. When the proposed Emergency Response Training Center will be the first of its kind in the region, and it will serve as a regional multidiscipline hub where local, state, and federal teams can train together. And the idea is that we'll expand this work to our Western campuses, which would be Loxahatchee Groves as well as Belgrade. It's a cutting-edge response, and the training for all students will be trained for careers in public safety, an environment that provides cutting-edge simulated experiences with the most technically advanced equipment instruction. And I mentioned that this is local police, fire, EMS, state, federal, and these are the agencies that we think would be attracted to the facility. It's in demand. This is actually a picture of the building that collapsed over in Miami. There's just an increased, increased demand for natural disasters, rise in hostile events, aging infrastructure. This is a Surfside condo that was the collapse in 2021, and it's the evolution of the industry since the 1970s, so we are on the cutting edge. Here's an idea about the cost. So I want you to know that we have a phased approach for how we want to address this growth. The total cost is like just under $9 million. We're seeking funding for Phase 1, which is a little bit over $3 million. This kind of gives you an idea of what will be included in Phase 1. That's classrooms. We're going to do a collapse pile, a trench prop, tower crane, civilian rope course. Those are the kinds of things that will be, what happened in Phase 1. We already have the staffing for that, so this will not be an increase in recurring costs. We already have faculty to do this. We just need this support to get it going. So it's not the kind of thing where you give us Phase 1 and we sit on it. You give us Phase 1 and we'll start producing right away. And you have an idea of what's expected in Phase 2. And we're thinking that Phase 1 will take about 18 months, Phase 2 another 18. So this is about a five-year, three-phase, a project that's phased in and three phases over a five-year period. And we're really meeting the increased demand for emergency response training. Hurricane Ian, which struck our state in the fall of 2022, was the fifth strongest storm ever to strike in the U.S. and the deadliest hurricane to hit Florida since 1935, and it cost $112.9 billion in damage and more than 150 deaths. So with the frequency and intensity of severe weather events accelerating, Florida's increasing population development, we think that having an ERTC is a right thing to do, not just for Palm Beach County, but for the state. And certainly, I'm hoping that you all can support it. I've had some conversation with Representative Caruso, and he has expressed an interest in supporting us in this endeavor. And I also had a very limited conversation with Senator Harrell. And we'll be talking to Representative Waldron because it is right in her community. And just know that this is not something that's just for that area, although that's where the work will be expanded to, is something for the whole county. So I wanted to make you aware of our priority. Please know that in addition to this, that there will be requests from the Florida College System to increase our budget by $100 million. And that's important because what I need you to know is that property and casualty has gone up 27% for us. And so we're going to need the increase to cover that cost. You may not be aware that for insurance, we have a consortium of Florida colleges that come together. We're not a part of the state insurance. And so, but that 27% is increased. Another interesting fact I want to make you aware of is that our utilities have gone up about $1 million. That's what's anticipated for this year. So having the increase to our recurring budget of $100 million is already going to be taken up by these other increased costs that have been placed on our system. So just want you to be aware of our priorities. Know that I'm open to answer any questions you might have. But we will be working this year to certainly, to continue to provide top support to our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for Dr. Parker? Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you for asking. Mr. Mayor, Dr. Parker, thank you for the presentation in regards to the Emergency Response Training. What I'm trying to find out is, have you had discussions with, like, the school district, and the PBA, the FOP, and our local fire union in regards to getting support for this endeavor?
So I'm going to first ask our fire director to respond to his contact with them, and then I can respond legislatively.
Good morning. My name is Dave Hamel. I'm the director of the Fire Academy here at Palm Beach State. And yes, we have had, for about the last 18 months, we've had an ongoing conversation with stakeholders. And we've gotten to the point now where we're ready to put a plan together and implement that.
Yeah, because I would just, follow up, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, just, I would, I think that it's important to get hopefully a lot of support from our local union, PBA, FOP, because this is such an important endeavor, and so in that way, this is not just Palm Beach State College, but this is a community effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just follow up, I know that as we prepared the documents for the governor's office, they're asking us for those type of support letters, and so we have started to reach out, in addition to the planning that Dave has already done, but also starting to reach out to get those letters of support to confirm that they're with us in this endeavor.
Thank you. All right, Senator Berman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And President Parker, thank you so much for everything you do and for your presentation. Just want to clarify, because I keep asking and I'm not getting 100% answer. Will that facility be here on this campus? Is that what's proposed?
So no. Basically, some of the work, I should say yes and no. Some of the work could happen here based upon what we have, but the idea is to expand it, and we'll be expanding more to the Western communities for the actual physical, let's say, the portable classrooms and, let's say, the collapse pile. Those things would be between Loxahatchee Groves and Belgrade, but some of that work can happen here. But the dollars are more concentrated for out there, right?
Thank you, and I'm appreciative since I represent those areas, so thank you.
Senator Harrell, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And as a follow-up, I'm very interested in this. I think it's a marvelous idea, given what is happening, not just in Florida, but nationally. And we have many other state colleges that have this kind of, that do have law enforcement firefighter training. Would they be able to have a program on your campus? In other words, could they come and be part, take one or two courses here? Or is there any look to make this more statewide so that you would have more access and other students coming in specifically from our state colleges for this type of training?
So yes, we would be available for that type of training. Part of this is targeted to existing personnel who already have their credential and working. And so it's like additional training to support them. But then also, we'll be in a position to partner with our sister colleges who have students going through programs like ours so that if they would like to have their students participate and take some of the training with us, that would be available to them. And I'd be directing my team to work closely with those institutions with public safety programs within their community to make sure that we are partnering as much as possible.
Thank you. Representative Casello?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you didn't call me Representative Caruso. Mistaken many times for that. President Parker, thank you for the presentation. I know how hard you worked to get the dental and the medical building up and running. It took a number of years, a lot of hard work and diligence. Being, coming from the public safety sector, as you well know, this is very dear and near to my heart. My question is that, a couple of questions, if I may. The Fire Academy that you now support here, would that be moving to this new facility, would be coming out of the grounds here at Palm Beach State and moving to the west?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of the question?
The question would be that the Fire Academy you now run here on campus, would that be moving to this potentially new facility?
No, sir. All the minimum standard firefighter training will stay here at Lake Worth. What we're doing is, we've grown to the point where we can't facilitate what we're trying to do here anymore. So this advanced training will be moved into a different location.
Thank you. Follow up, Mayor?
Yes. The individuals that go through this program, once it's up and running, would they be certification? Would it be certification? How does that work to make them so they could go to these national disasters like we had down in Surfside, where they have their certification that they're allowed to on-site?
Yes, so these are all certificate programs, and then we also work with the Bureau of Fire Standards for approved board certification. So that credential can be recognized anywhere that they go.
One more, Mayor?
So this is a simple question, probably not that simple. But as a delegation, as elected officials up there at the state, I know we all supported your endeavor on the medical building, and I believe we all support, would support this. How can we kind of like, not fast-track it, but try to move it along on a road that's, you know, not so bumpy?
So thank you very much for that question. And I think that this is the first year that we've submitted this appropriation request. And we actually just presented this to our board at our meeting last month. And so what I'd say to you about it is that Dave was actually contacted by the CFO for the state about potentially expanding this. So I think that what we will do is we'll be meeting with our delegation to provide information on the program, to arm you with information about it, and also show you the letters of support that we have so you can see the other folks who are with us. We'd like to rely upon you and your expertise, if there are other agencies that you think we should be working with to get their support as well. Certainly, as Commissioner Bernard indicated, making sure other unions that have strong delegations or other public safety organizations, want to make sure they're like on first base with us and helping us to bring this home so that we can try to do this. Because it is such a great need for the whole state to see if we can do this in the first year that we're submitting the request. So just, we'll do more of our homework, and I certainly want to apologize, Senator Berman. I should have remembered that part of your district is there, so please forgive me. I forgot based upon the new line. So please forgive me. We will be there in your office to share with you what the idea is that we're looking to support. So probably the best is for us to arm you with the information, get ideas from you on how to push it forward, and then work with us to try to bring it home as a project for our county and not just for the college.
Thank you, President.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Representative Caruso, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just, and President Parker, I just want to thank you for your leadership at the college here. It's not the place it was when you got here. And I say that with a positive note. I mean, it's just amazing the work you've done here. And your vision with the Emergency Response Training Center is outstanding. I would just want everybody to know on the panel here that this could be life-changing for Palm Beach County, for the state of Florida. To think that we would attract emergency response teams from all over the country to train here in the state of Florida, in Palm Beach County, at the Palm Beach State College, is incredible. And we've already have the seed planted here already, and it's just an expansion of that to be a, you know, a model for the country and a place where, you know, we have a shortage right now in emergency response personnel. And we all know that a lot of us, myself included, I came down for a week to do some work, and I never left Florida. I came from Washington, D.C. That will happen, and I'm sure a lot of us have the same story. Came down on vacation and we're still here. Well, these emergency response individuals, personnel, will come here to train, and they'll go, wow, this is amazing. Let's just stay here in Florida, and it'll help fill that void. So thank you for your leadership and your forethought.
Thank you, sir. Representative Skidmore, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Parker. I think I have you beat, Commissioner.
We're very happy having an appropriation for the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative. Thank you Senator Berman, thank you Representative Caruso for sponsoring that. That was the Lauxteche, that was the Hyperluxo Septic to Sewer Program. We had five projects from the Lauxteche River Preservation Initiative that were funded for a total of $1.3 million. Senator Harrell, thank you again for sponsoring that as an initiative on the Senate side. And Representative Roth, thank you for your sponsorship on some of those items as well. We were able to receive $375,000 for Restore Reentry Program. That is one of the preeminent reentry programs in the state. And again, we thank Senator Berman for her sponsorship of that in the Senate. Once again, we were able to receive $1.7 million for the Everglades Workforce Training Program. Senator Polsky and Representative Skidmore, thank you for sponsoring that. We understand that redistricting has shepherded you out of the Glades, so we will be looking for other sponsors for that, but that's something that Casey will talk about in just a few minutes. We're also very happy to receive our recurring funding amount for the Butterfly House, which is the Palm Beach County Rape Crisis Center. Working with our Economic Council of Palm Beach's partners, as well as the Business Development Board, we are pleased that Visit Florida was funded at $50 million. The Florida Job Growth Grant Fund was funded at $50 million. And knowing that arts means business in Palm Beach County, we were grateful for the $73 million appropriation for our cultural and museum programs, many of which were funded here in Palm Beach County. We had extraordinary beach funding last year, funded at $105 million. With that came six projects in Palm Beach County that totaled just a little over $6 million. And two very large items that were in the budget, as mentioned previously, after many years of hard work, the Palm Beach State College Dental Building was funded at $25 million, as well as a $100 million appropriation for the University of Florida West Palm Beach Global Center for Technology. And I am proud to report that the city of West Palm Beach and Palm Beach County continue to work together to further that project along.
As we look at some of the policy wins that we had last year, we wanted to thank Representative Harrell, I'm sorry Senator Harrell and Representative Skidmore for their work on the State Road 715 Road designation, where we were able to name a road in the Glades for two deputy sheriffs who lost their lives in the line of duty, Dante Manuel and Jonathan Wallace, and we thank you both for your advocacy on that. In the area of recovery residences, Senator Harrell and Representative Caruso have been two of our champions, not just of our delegation, but in the entire state of Florida, in being able to tighten up some of the regulations on some of those recovery residences, and we appreciate your continued support of that, as well as the rest of the delegation. Additionally, Representative Caruso made some strides too, in the area of drug-related overdose prevention and access to some additional opportunities in that area. And then finally, our public records homelessness counts, we thank you for the passage of Senate Bill 934. It keeps those records of homelessness during those counts under wraps. It helps us in being able to get a very accurate count here in Palm Beach County. And then finally, thank you Senator Powell for you and all your work on the area of juvenile justice diversion, on some of the program expansion that we worked on. We just wanted to share a lot of these with you to show this is a collective effort from our entire legislative delegation, and clearly, we could not have been this successful without each and every one of you. So, thank you legislative delegation for your work. Casey?
Actually, I'll take over for economic development. We always start with economic development in the Glades, so we are looking always to provide economic growth and stimulus to the region surrounding Lake Okeechobee. We are always looking for opportunities to equip more affordable housing units. We're looking for opportunities for stormwater improvements, and through that is our appropriation for the Glades Region Infrastructure Project. We also are looking for full funding for the Everglades Workforce Training Program, which is officially called the Everglades Restoration Agricultural Community Employment Training Program, but that's what we call it, Everglades Workforce Training. An issue with Everglades Workforce Training that we've seen over the past couple of years, some of the, some of the funding for companies to provide training, as well as some of the funding for individuals to receive tuition assistance through that program, has not been centered in the Glades area. It's been, it's been kind of scattered throughout the county, so we are working to try to tighten up the rules for that program, to make sure that those dollars stay in the Glades Region in Palm Beach County and the eastern portion of Henry County. For the Rural Jobs Tax Credit, we are looking for full funding for that program, as it is a tax credit provided to new or expanding employers in rural areas of opportunity, and those rural areas of opportunities include Belgrade, South Bay, and Pahokee. So, we're looking for full funding, but we're also looking, it's currently valued up to a $1,000 tax credit for each job created. We are hoping to find a way to increase that amount to $2,000 per job created. The Qualified Target Industries Tax Program, that was a program that was allowed to expire back in 2020. We would love to see that reauthorized and implemented. That would certainly help our Business Development Board recruit headquarters to local businesses, as well as create high-quality, high-wage employment opportunities for industries such as logistics and distribution, clean tech, and aviation and aerospace. On Peanut Island, we are looking to restore this rich part of Palm Beach County's history in restoring these historic facilities on the island. Palm Beach County has taken control of Peanut Island from the port, so now it is our responsibility to make sure those facilities are available for the public to use for education and for tourism reasons. So, we are looking for an appropriation for $1.5 million to assist in the renovation of those facilities there. Commissioner Marino, do you have anything else to add on the Peanut Island issue?
Wow, I get to go first? First off, I'd like to actually thank Catherine Waldron, when she was a Port Commissioner, called me, and I think it was my first month in office to discuss this, and I went to a port meeting. This is really a true partnership between many entities, not just Palm Beach County and the state, but Find is also partnering with us to donate some dollars, and as you said, this is a lease from, from the port. So, we've already invested money in Peanut Island, so it would be a great use of additional dollars to keep that money that we've already invested doing what it's supposed to do. So, anything you could do to help us with Peanut Island, we would greatly appreciate it. It really is a historic treasure, and we need to renovate it and make it the facility that it used to be, and people love going there, and it's gated off right now. We'd like to get rid of those gates. Thank you.
Our Parks and Recreation Department is eager to start that project, to get people on there. And finally, along with our partners at the Economic Council of Palm Beach County, we do support fund, full funding for some of our statewide economic development programs, the Florida Job Growth Grant Fund, Enterprise Florida, Visit Florida, and we would support the investment of state tourism dollars for the promotion of equine tourism, not just in Palm Beach County, but throughout the state of Florida. And a couple of economic development appropriations requests, I'll have Casey Denny, our new legislative director, talk about.
Good morning, everyone. Just diving a little deeper into some of these projects. The first, we have the Glades Region Infrastructure Project. The continued deterioration of the infrastructure in the Glades Region has resulted in threats to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents in the area, and it's also really curtailed our ability to attract economic development and business expansion. So, Palm Beach County is going to be requesting $3 million to provide specific infrastructure improvements that are going to repair and restore the water, wastewater, stormwater, and a few transportation infrastructure projects as well, in the Glades Region to a safe and effective level. So, that's for $3 million. You've already heard about the Peanut Island Historic Restoration from Ed and Commissioner Marino. Palm Beach County is requesting $1.5 million for this program, and we are offering a local match of $1.5 million as well. Moving on to the Everglades Workforce Training Program, this training program will provide technical and skills training for individuals either currently employed in the agriculture industry, or individuals seeking employment opportunities outside of the agriculture industry. And training and tuition is provided directly to programs at educational facilities to help the individuals in the surrounding Lake Okeechobee area. Palm Beach County is requesting $1.7 million, again, for the continuation of this program for the Department of Economic Opportunity, and we've seen a lot of success come out of this program. Next, we have an issue that is near and dear to Commissioner Saxhart. She couldn't be here with us today, but this is the West El Rey Regional Park, and these are renovations that would include the addition of a boundless playground, so it would be an all-inclusive playground for children with all abilities. The accessible structure would be unique to the park and would provide children of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds, the enjoyment of the health and developmental benefits of outdoor play. So, we're requesting $1 million for this project.
Before we move on, this might be a good opportunity to open up for discussion or conversation, any items that we've spoken about so far, or if there's any initiatives by either the Board of County Commission or legislative delegation that we'd like to bring up. So, Mr. Chairman, I will turn this back to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Palm Beach State for putting this together, and staff for putting in all the hard work. A couple of these things relate directly to my district, so I just wanted to bring up something that seemed to have not been mentioned. We have a serious need in order to even go along with infrastructure to help businesses be there. We need demucking to be a part of this as well, and offer some dollars for that, because without that, it makes it impossible and unaffordable to build on those lands. So, I just wanted to mention that. And also, I did look over the facts earlier, so I'm going to just take a second to thank my chief of staff, Don Carter, for being here.
Great, thank you. Senator Berman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not sure if this is the right time to discuss it, but it sort of goes into what we were just talking about in the Glades Regional Initiatives. I know that the county passed the $200 million bond this year, and I see on here, the very first line about the Glades is improvements to existing affordable housing units. So, I was wondering what the, how much, if you're going to discuss the $200 million bond and how it will interact with the Glades and where it will be focused.
We were planning on having a conversation on that. We can certainly get into that now, if you'd like to.
I mean, we could wait until you have it on your program, but just want to make sure we talk about that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, and then Commissioner Wal, or Commissioner, Representative Waldron.
First off, as you know, you know, whatever I can do to help with the Peanut Island thing, I'm happy to work with your, whoever's spearheading it, I'm happy to spearhead it since it just was there back in November, so I think it's an important thing. My question has to do with affordable housing, and are you looking at, well, two questions really, it's two parts, infill and upzoning, and also, there seems to be a bill that is being presented that would take away the power of local government to, for rent, on rent control. So, have you, you know, what will the impact be on that, and have you, are you, what are your thoughts on that?
Specific to the piece of legislation, which was Senate Bill 102 filed last week, our staff has had an opportunity to begin review of that legislation. We've got a couple of just initial thoughts. I mean, on the one hand, obviously, the commitment of funding from the legislature to ship and sail, we deeply appreciate. We think that that is absolutely the right direction that the legislature needs to go, and we support that. We're reviewing a number of different proposals in there related to sort of how the state wants to look at ad valorem tax exemptions, how they want to put additional height and density on properties for affordable housing, and we're just kind of doing a broader review of that right now. So, hopefully, we'll have more information in the coming week and weeks for you. We're working closely with the Florida Association of Counties on that as well. And then, specific to the issue of rent control, Palm Beach County did not put in effect anything related to rent control. We did do an ordinance related to notification if rents were to increase in our county, and we provided a 60-day notice to increase, so that a resident who is living somewhere, if their lease was being terminated, modified, or if it was being increased by 5% or more, that we wanted the landlord and the tenant to be able to have an ample amount of time to work with each other, because if the tenant was being, was going to be leaving, we wanted to give them more than a couple of weeks, which was what state law currently has, so that they can find an ample place for them and their families to go to. Likewise, we wanted the landlord to have ample opportunity to be able to fill that unit as well. So, we'd like to maintain that. We think it's worked pretty well, and we haven't had a lot of complaints about that at all from some of our landlords in the community, but that was what we've done locally on that respect, and we'd like to be able to continue to have that in place.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marino, you're recognized, and then we'll have Representative Casello.
Thank you, and just the importance of the 60 days, not even, not for nothing, good expression, my mother wouldn't like that, but oftentimes, it takes at least 30 days for a credit report, so if you only give your tenant 30 days, chances are, they're not going to even be able to find a place in 30 days. So, a 60-day window of notification really is important, and thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Representative Casello?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, well, FYI, I guess, that there's legislation that's going to be going through up there in Tallahassee to preempt rent controls, any kind of form, shape of rent control. Would that have a negative effect on what you're trying to do there in Palm Beach County?
Yeah, I mean, we think it has the potential. Again, we're still sort of reviewing that component of the law, and our attorneys are looking into the legal basis by which we were able to provide for that 60-day ordinance locally. I know that in other areas of the state, initiatives went to the voters in terms of actual rent control and putting controls on pricing. We didn't do that. I mean, ours was more of a notification. We thought it was a better consumer awareness perspective to come from that. So, we'd like to be able to continue doing that locally, and I know we're not alone in doing that. Broward County, Miami-Dade, a number of our municipalities started down that road in our county as well. So, when we're seeing rents increase the way they are throughout our community, it's one of the very few tools that we have in order to do something that we think is beneficial, not just to the tenant, but also to the landlord in that.
And I would agree with that assessment. And just one other question, Mayor. The appropriation request that you put in, do we have matching funds for that, or any type of funds that would match those requests?
We do. I mean, literally, every appropriation request that we've asked you for, we're going to go over today. Palm Beach County has skin in the game, and our other partners that we support in these efforts have skin in the game on the matching, and that's one thing that we've worked very closely with to do over the years. So, yes, Representative.
Thank you.
Just to follow up, our board has been very instrumental in allowing us to allocate additional federal dollars that have come down. We've spent a significant number of our dollars on assisting our residents with their rent and making that difference. We've done so well here in Palm Beach County that we've received two additional allocations from the federal government. And so, what we're finding is that our, some of our fastest-growing homeless populations happen to be our seniors, as well as families. And so, we're, we're working, our residents, as you well know, have agreed to tax themselves $200 million so that we can continue to grow. A shortage of housing is a major problem. So, whether you do a 60-day notice, that helps, but if the units aren't there to put those individuals in, they'll still be on the street. So, we do appreciate any assistance that our delegation, and our delegation has been really good to us in the past on helping us with dollars for housing. So, thank you.
All right. We will, we will move on to some policy issues. We'll start with transportation and infrastructure. First, our impact fees and our, our ability to collect impact fees. So, we would, knowing that there is a proposal from the Florida League of Cities on mobility that would interfere in our ability to, to collect and implement impact fees, we would oppose any legislation that would adversely affect our ability to, to collect voter-approved impact fees in Palm Beach County. Administrator Baker, if there are any other comments that you would like to make on the impact fee issue?
Near and dear to my heart. Specifically, the road impact fee, the county only assesses road impact fees on county roads, which are the spine roads in Palm Beach County. They are designated roadways. They run from Toquista to Boca, from the Atlantic Ocean to Lake Okeechobee. They feed into our major cities where our businesses are located, where people traverse from their home to work. We also have accountability in the ordinance. So, our ordinance requires that impact fees be encumbered by the sixth year after collecting and expended by the ninth year after being collected. Otherwise, you have to return those dollars. We have not had an issue meeting that criteria, because impact fees collected do not pay the entire cost of those improvements based upon growth. We will continue to work that way. We have, in the past, suspended impact fees when we didn't have a capital program to support it. We will continue to do so. But at some point, we will get to the point, there is no feasible way to continue to improve certain county roadways, so we will need to address congestion. But right now, we haven't gotten to that point. And impact fees only pay for the capital side of things. Mobility fees will allow you more so to pay for capital as well as the operating side of things. We did decades ago, look at a mobility fee. Once you give credit for all of the federal grants, ad valorem dollars going toward it, the fee became negligible. And so, we are not opposed to mobility fee, we're just opposed to wiping out the voter-approved impact fees, because we still have a lot more work to do. And so, when that occurs, we will be strong, staff will even be recommending to our board to eliminate it if we have no projects to continue to apply these dollars appropriately. We will, and still, we can look at mobility fees as we continue to move forward. I think the critical key, because we are one of the largest counties, as you well know, east of the Mississippi River. We have urban, suburban, rural tiers that we need to get people moving around. We're encouraging economic development out in the Glades. If that occurs, we're going to definitely need to ensure people can move around in the Glades. So, we are moving forward. We do look, and we have been talking about, a dedicated funding source for mobility. As we know, Miami-Dade and Broward, Broward the most recent, did approve funding for their continued operating costs and capital for their mobility fee in Broward. So, again, we, we would like your support in allowing us to continue to implement the voters-approved impact fees, and to please keep in mind, we are monitoring, and when we have no more roads to build, it's not feasible for us to do it, we will be making that recommendation to our board.
Thank you. Senator Harrell, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, and I'd really encourage Palm Beach County and the Association of Counties to work with the League of Cities, and please come to us with some resolution for this fight that has gone on now for several years with lots of lawsuits. I've said the same thing to the League of Cities. I've said the same thing to all cities. Please work this out. Don't have the state come in and do what you accuses of doing all the time of preempting, and you come to us with the solution. I was chairman of transportation for two years, and I can tell you, this is a big issue that has got to be addressed. We're moving to a new era, and I would absolutely encourage the League of Cities and the Association of Counties, and Palm Beach County, as one of the largest counties, be a leader in this, and come to us with a solution. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Senator. All right, I don't see any other cards up. Let us continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of airport-related items, one on transportation network companies, our friends at Uber and Lyft. We would oppose any effort to cap the fee charged by an airport to a TNC for picking up at the airport. Senator Harrell, we appreciate your efforts on our behalf of that last year as chair. A new issue this year, airport contracts. For airport contracts that are over a certain threshold of dollars, those contracts have to be brought back for approval to the full Board of County Commission, not on consent, but as an agenda item. We are working with other airports, as well as the Florida Airports Council, on granting the ability to approve certain contracts on a consent agenda that does include a reasonable opportunity for public comment. The Florida Airport Council's language also is making an effort to increase those monetary thresholds, to bring them up to reasonable 2023 standards. I don't think they've been changed, at least in more than a decade. So, that would certainly help our airport director out from appearing at every single Board of County Commission meeting to go through those contracts. We are in full support of all of our FDOT programs, including our airport grant programs and all funding programs, but especially the SCOP, Small County Outreach Program, which helps our Glades Area communities with their roads issues. On the Rural Infrastructure Fund, Commissioner Baxter, thank you for your comments, and they apply exactly here, so thank you for that, for that segue. So, that Rural Infrastructure Fund, we would like to see that brought up to a level of $3.6 million, but one of the changes that we would like to make is to include the opportunity for infrastructure improvements to affordable and workforce, workforce housing and economic development projects. This means demucking, exactly what you're looking for there, so we would love to have that included in that situation.
And Representative Casello, to your point about local match on some of the projects that we bring forward to you, the next two that we have on the slide are central Palm Beach County infrastructure and our transportation disadvantaged bus passes. A perfect example of really how we overmatch some of these programs, the million dollars we're asking of the legislature on the infrastructure for central Palm Beach is matching $3 million that our board put forward, and this is really to help in some of our, specifically in our cities that are sort of aging cities with aged infrastructure, to work in partnership with them. We're working very closely with Palm Springs, for example, on one of their projects right now with our existing dollars to help them with some wastewater treatment in their community. And then, to transportation disadvantaged bus passes, the $2 million there, I mean, we spend well over $30 million a year on this particular program in Palm Beach County, probably more so as a percentage than any other county in the state of Florida. And so, because of that, we understand that we've got a population that has a lot of needs in our community, particularly some of our elderly, some of our children that we transport to charter schools that have different disabilities, and so, we're just asking the state to recognize that contribution that we make, and maybe provide us a little additional assistance as we work to provide that transportation disadvantaged support throughout the community.
Representative Casello, you're recognized.
Thank you, Todd, for that. As you know, last year, I believe it was, that we put an appropriation in for a million, close to $1 million. It was approved all the way up, and it got to the governor's desk, and he unfortunately vetoed it. Mr. Chase, just a quick question. I believe there's a bill that's being drafted, that's in drafting right now, Casey could probably talk a little more about it, in regards to airport contracts. There's a certain threshold number that, that we're trying to get, so you don't have to keep going to the board for a vote on every time it happens. That's in drafting right now. I'm looking to be the sponsor of that when it comes out of drafting. I think it's a great idea. I know, coming from local government, we gave, gave the city manager some leeway on the numbers, where it didn't have to always come up before a board for a vote. So, hopefully, that comes out of drafting, and it's, you know, it's okay with your staff, and we'll file it. Thank you.
We appreciate your help on that, Representative Casello. Thank you.
All right.
Any other comments or questions on our transportation and infrastructure before we move on to our local government section? So, just to local government, these are a couple of items that we wanted to share with you. We've talked a little bit about some preemptions that you've seen in, in local law that's pending in the area of housing. This is one specific to local wage mandates. We have a local living wage ordinance that allows us in the construction industry, as well as in the transportation industry, to provide a living wage for some of those individuals in the county who have county contracts, and we'd like to be able to preserve that ability locally. On the issue of vacation rentals, thank you Representative Caruso, I know that you've worked with us tremendously to try to regain a little bit more additional local control. We've gone back and forth with the legislature on this over quite some time, but again, we're looking specifically to just find some identifying information about responsible parties, location information of those vacation rentals, and any assistance there would be helpful. In the area of our tourist development tax, we've seen a little bit over time, the ability, you know, the legislature keeps on putting in different uses and more and more uses to expand that. We believe that we've got a really good complement right now for tourist development taxes, of what we can use them for, and we don't want to see it get too diluted and being used for other things than what we are right now for the for other things than what we are right now for the TDT. And we would oppose efforts to expand the future uses and expansion of uses of that. And then finally, the issue of sovereign immunity. We know that came up last year. The legislature was looking at a piece of legislation to raise from $200,000 to $1 million sovereign immunity limits. We understand the pain of the local bill process in Tallahassee, but definitely, those kinds of increases are really significant. This is one where we want to work with you, so if we have a seat at the table with you, if you're having those discussions this year, we'd like to, just to make sure that any increases are reasonable in relation to, you know, those limits that are in place right now.
Senator Powell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Administrator Bonlaren, the question I have is with regard to that sovereign immunity, and we've seen some language being pushed around with regard to increasing the limits. And the challenge for local governments with regard to the increased limits, I think I saw somewhere right now, the most recent thing I saw was $200,000. My question is, what would $200,000 do considering that we are at a point where we've seen, you know, rapid inflation? I don't think that limit has moved in a number of years. Do you know off the top of your head that what that type of increase would do to municipalities or to the county?
Yeah. So Senator, our current limit that we have is $200,000 on an individual incident. Last year, some of the language was looking to up it to $1 million. I mean, what that does is it, I mean, Ms. Baker can tell you how many lawsuits she gets served on a daily basis, probably more than she cares to acknowledge. But what you do is when you increase those limits, you invite more and more liability on the county, more and more potential lawsuits, and spending more and more tax dollars to try to negotiate a number of those lawsuits. I mean, $1 million is a lot of money on one incident. And we acknowledge that there are certainly some cases that, you know, that are pretty difficult in governments and sovereign immune organizations around the state, and we get that. And that's why that process was put forward for the legislature to look at some of those cases one-off when they exceed that 200,000 limit. Ed, it's been about how long since it was last changed? About 10 years or so?
More than a decade.
More than a decade since it was last increased. But, you know, significant increases in this area mean that more of your local tax dollars potentially are going to be spent settling lawsuits as opposed to delivering services, which is where we'd like to see more of that money directed.
Thank you. Representative Roth, you're recognized. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Just a point of information, as you were talking about vacation rentals and tourist development tax, I remember a couple of years ago when we were fighting, trying, keeping it, trying to be, I was against the vacation rentals bill. And it seems like the amount of tax revenue in Palm Beach County was somewhere around $50 million. Can you give us the number, what it was in 2021? You're talking about tourist development tax revenue?
Representative Roth, we'll get that for you before the end of the meeting. I don't know if we have that number handy, but we'll look that up for you real quick.
In general, I'm sorry, Chair, can I ask one more?
Oh, yes, please.
Thank you. In general, are we back? Are we doing okay?
We are, Representative Roth. The Tax Collector has been diligent in working with the real estate agents here in Palm Beach County and other property managers. And so, those that have, in the past, rented and not paid the tax, that number of those coming into compliance has definitely increased. So we have seen an increase, especially in our equestrian community. They have been notifying. The Tax Collector has a unit that deals just with vacation rentals and ensuring that people that are renting and abiding by the law are also paying their bed taxes as well.
Thank you. I just want to add in, Representative Roth, one of the things that I know, and I specifically have been asking for, is this location information. That has, the legislature exempted that information. Everything else, pretty much in this state is a public record, except that information. And if you're going to buy a house, you go and you visit the home on a nice Saturday afternoon or a Sunday afternoon, you walk through, everything looks nice, little do you know, the house next door is a place where they have large gatherings and so forth. It's a commercial activity that happens there every week. And the buyer is, there's no record of that information anywhere for them to find, if they're so inclined to want to go look for that, they can't find it. And, you know, it's unfortunate. People move in, and then once they move in and they find out what they're living next door, we hear about it. They're very vocal about what's happening, and the number of resources then that they start requiring to help deal with what they moved into next door. So if that could be rectified, that would, I think, would go a long way.
I'll just make a comment, Chair.
Absolutely.
I weren't happy to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Are there more comments on this? Oh, Representative Casello, sorry.
Just a point of information. Thank you, ma'am. I talked to Tax Collector Dorothy Jacks, and she had, she was going to bring it to her delegation. They have a statewide registration. So when somebody goes to buy a home or anything, they can look this up and see what that property is and how it's. I think that's a great idea. We'd love that, you know, move that forward in one form or another, but I haven't heard back from her yet, but that's something that maybe this legislative, seeing we can get it in the queue and move them forward a little bit.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I think a lot of people would appreciate it. All right. Anything else? Okay, we can move on.
All right. Moving on to a hot topic of today, affordable housing. Palm Beach County supports efforts to increase funding for affordable housing and supports efforts to ensure that the Sodowsky Housing Trust funds are fully funded and appropriated only for affordable housing projects. We also have a state leverage of local dollars. Commissioner Bernard, he stepped out for a minute, but this is something that's also very important to him. And finding a mechanism where, when local entities have skin in the game to invest in affordable housing, finding a way to leverage that with possibly a new pot of state dollars for local governments who are making progress on this issue and dedicating funds specifically to this issue. And Commissioner Baker, or Administrator Baker, do you have any comments? Okay.
Yeah, maybe this is a good opportunity for us to kind of dive in a little bit more to some of those questions earlier that Senator Berman had about some of the local things that we're doing in the area of housing, and then talk a little bit how we might be able to leverage some of that in Tallahassee as we move forward this legislative session. Administrator Baker?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Moving on to homeless, and I would be remiss, I know that Commissioner Bernard is not here, but our board did designate him as the lead on the bond referendum. He did an outstanding job for us. We were relegated to being very careful on how we walked this particular project through and getting information out to the public. Our business community felt that it was very, very important because they are now feeling the impact of workers leaving our community, going to other places that rents were more affordable, and then not coming back to Palm Beach County. And so, we put that word out with the business community and Commissioner Bernard heading, spearheading it, and other commissioners getting on board as well and sharing that information. So our voters did pass $200 million bond, GO bond, to assist with the housing. We anticipate hearing, having a validation hearing with the judge sometime mid-February. Once that validation has been completed, staff will then go back to the board with the rules and regulations that will govern specifically these dollars. The dollars were allocated only for housing that met the 140% and below categories. And so, that fits in line with our workforce affordable housing category. Our board also allocated of our sales tax $25.5 million just for affordable housing. So we are focused on this. We would like and would request that you consider setting aside a certain pot of money for communities that are now investing in that area over and above our normal ship sale and then the HUD dollars coming down, because our voters are vested and they are putting these dollars in place. So we were looking forward to further discussion with you. I do know that our guidelines as far as family income coming in is based upon the household average median income. We all know that those numbers are skewed because we have some higher-paying jobs, but they're a smaller category, but they skew the majority of our families' income here in Palm Beach County. We are working with the federal government because we want to kind of get some exceptions made and carve it out so that what we call affordable is really truly affordable. Because a family of four in a two-bedroom, $2,000-plus unit, it is very difficult, especially for our hospitality industry, our retail industry, et cetera. So we are working on that, and we will be also speaking with you on the possibility of having to relook at the average median income so that it is affordable when we put families, we invest in these units, and we put families in.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any other questions.
Yes. Let's see. So Representative Casello, and then we'll have Representative Roth.
A million questions today. Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. We got a $200 million pot of money for affordable housing. How do we get that message out? Like, who is eligible to receive these funds? Is there some type of an advertisement campaign going on? And does the residents out in the Glades area, far away from the municipalities, the center of the cities, where we mostly talk about, are they getting a fair, would they get their fair share of that 200 million?
Let me try and address that for you, Representative Casello. So at this point, the board is not, we're getting ready, we're going to be doing a series of workshops on how we're going to be using this funding, but initially, the mechanism was looking to use this funding as for bridge financing, gap financing for projects. So that it would be utilized to build projects that would provide for affordable and workforce housing. The builders of these projects find it very difficult to get funding for those units specifically. While they're, the market rate units, you know, there are financial firms that are willing to provide a reasonable rate for them to obtain those funds, but on the affordable and workforce units, they, there isn't that amount of interest in providing financing for them. So this was to be used as a revolving fund, a loan fund, so that loan would then be repaid with that project. A lot of times, as you know, projects get built and then they get sold. The restriction would stay in place on those units. And then, if the project were to be sold, that funds, those funds would then be returned back into the loan program and could be reused for another program. So it's not geographic-based, it'll be done on a project. But we have much more work to do on this and iron out all the policies and program requirements. But that was the intent when Commissioner Bernard brought this forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Representative Roth, you're recognized.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. And Ms. Baker, thank you for that explanation a little bit on your program. Two thoughts. One is, I love what I heard, which was talking about the state leveraging of local dollars. What I hear when you say that is merit-based programs. I would love to have more conversations in Tallahassee, and obviously, we've all heard that Senator President Pasadomo just announced her affordable housing program, so that's a big, big deal. Last week was our deadline for submitting bills, so I have not read the bill, none of us have read the bill, but I just want to make the comment that I think we do need to look at, can we modify the way that the ship dollars come down to the counties based on merit? When you already have a program in place, or you're in, and you're in a county that does have a severe affordable housing problem, should you get more, a higher percentage of the tax of the Sodowsky funds? And my answer is absolutely yes. I did get an affordable housing bill passed last year, and I would love to have Palm Beach County, you know, come to Tallahassee and talk more with the senators and the representatives about how we can modify the affordable housing program to get more matching dollars. Great idea.
Thank you, Representative. One thing I would put out is that the ship program right now, there's not as much flexibility in that program, and that there, as you know, I mean, the cost to build here is very different than the cost to build in some of our smaller rural counties, and that we'd be given more flexibility. So if multifamily rental is what is providing the more rooftops in Palm Beach County, that that decision be made locally as opposed to being dictated from Tallahassee as to what type of unit? Thank you. All right. Moving on.
Moving on to homelessness, we support the efforts of the legislature to identify and fund programs for the homeless. That includes full funding of the State Apartment Incentive Loan Program or Sale, funding for DCF Homeless Unified Challenge Grants, funding for youth homelessness prevention efforts, and funding for mental health programs and services, as well as sober homes legislation that would provide options to prevent individuals who are forced to leave a home from becoming homeless and back on the street. Moving on to the issue of landlord requirements, this is a new item that we added to our state legislative priorities this year, and it arose from an issue that we saw out in the Glades region where there was a landlord who was ignoring multiple life safety issues and having tenants live in horrendous and unsafe conditions. So our county would support legislation that would discourage the conduct of landlords who failed to provide and maintain basic minimum housing standards and who intentionally ignore code violations that threaten the health and safety of their tenants. We would also support legislation that would empower local governments to levy fines against landlords to recoup the cost of relocating residents from the condemned properties and hasten the process, allowing local governments to foreclose on and take title of property when in the interest of public safety, such as an instance like this.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving on to substance use and mental health.
Mr. Chair.
So first and foremost, our county supports the State Attorney Addiction Recovery Task Force and the recommended changes for the 2023 session, which are sponsored by Senator Harrell and Representative Caruso. Senator, Representative, if you want to take a moment and explain the bill, that'd be great.
Sorry. Excuse me. Representative Edmonds, you're recognized.
Yes, can we just back up really quick? When we're talking about homelessness and the youth homelessness prevention, who are we partnering with to identify the homelessness in youth? Are we working with the school district or additional nonprofits? How are we capturing that audience to serve?
I'm going to phone a friend and see if Ed has any.
We're specifically looking for funding on those issues. We're always, our Department of Community Services is always looking for available agencies and local nonprofits to partner with on that issue.
So the program is in service currently, correct?
Correct. It is. Mayor?
Sorry. Go ahead.
We have our department director, Mr. Green, here, and he can answer these questions with a little more specificity than I can at this point, so if you would not mind indulging.
So we partner with Palm Beach County School District, with the Department of Children and Families, various housing authorities. There are probably close to 60,000 or 70 nonprofit or governmental entities that we partner with in order to identify youth and properties, various programs.
Can you repeat it in the microphone? So we partner with close to about 65 or 70 different nonprofits, governmental institutions to identify and to provide services to our youth. That includes the Palm Beach County School District, the Department of Children and Families, even Career Source that works with different youth that are part of the TANF program and others. They are all a part of the homeless and housing.
They are all a part of the Homeless and Housing Alliance, which is a group of organizations that come together to identify and provide services for youth.
All out question?
Yes, sir.
And, and this may be a little random, but have you all ever considered working with some of the hotels in our area? I've had parents call and say they're not actually homeless because they live in a hotel, but they can't afford to actually own a house or rent an apartment right now, so they, they've had special rates with hotels, so is there any way we can look at working with hotels as well? I know this is appropriation and I'm talking more about the specificity of the program, but I did want to know.
So, there are maybe four or five different hotels that we are currently partnering with to place families into. Then, we, we work with Program Reach, which is run by Adopt a Family. It's only about 19 units, but it's not sufficient to address the family homelessness that we're dealing with in Palm Beach County, so we have developed some partnerships with hotels that provide us with a special rate and they work with us, have been working with us for a number of years now. Thank you. Representative, are you, are you?
Just want to give a quick plug to Mr. James Green and all he, all the work that he does, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Edmunds. Representative Caruso.
Thank you Mayor. I just wanted to, to make reference to the sober homes that Ms. Denny was speaking about and, and, you know, over the last five, four years, Senator Harrell and I have run a, a number of pieces of legislation aimed at cleaning up the sober home industry and making it a, a, a part of the, the health community that, that actually provides services to those fighting addiction. And we've worked hard on that and cracked down on the bad actors that were out there taking advantage of those fighting addiction, a hard enough route on its own, but when you're being abused, in addition, it, it makes it even a tougher road for those fighting addiction. This, the bills that we have in front of legislation, the legislature this year deals with, one of them sets up a Addiction Recovery Task Force with members appointed by the, the governor, I believe the, the Attorney General and the Speaker and the, and the Senate President, Pasodomo. So, and, and that's to keep a continued finger on the pulse of, of the sober home and addiction recovery industry, to continue to, you know, work on making it a, a better program for those. It also, believe it or not, right now with the, the onset of legal marijuana, medical marijuana, those fighting addiction, they're, you know, you, we open a window, we don't know what flies in, but in this case, we have medical marijuana being used in our sober home industry. In fact, different, different actors in the industry are, are marketing that come to our sober home, you can smoke pot. And so, we are going to make it so that it's illegal to, to bring marijuana and it's, it's just amazing that we even have to come up with legislation like this, but we are. And also, it, it addresses residents who are discharged that refuse to leave, they will be deemed trespassing and it'll be a second degree misdemeanor, but it'll allow them to be able to be physically removed by, by officers of the law if they are, are discharged. So, that's, that's it unless, Senator, am I missing something?
Senator recognized.
Thank you very much. I, I think you have touched on most of the elements of it and I just want to acknowledge that the Palm Beach County Task Force is the example that really is, has developed this legislation and the statewide task force that is going to be, hopefully, become a reality because of this legislation. Dave Ehrenberg, our state attorney, as well as Al Johnson have been leaders in the state and the nation for all they have done on addiction treatment, on sober homes, and really addressing the opioid and drug issues we have in Palm Beach County. And when I look at the numbers of fentanyl deaths, Palm Beach County has reduced the numbers of, of fentanyl deaths more so than any other county in the state and has the lowest per capita deaths from fentanyl. And part of that is, is because of this task force identifying mechanisms for really addressing the overall drug problem and addiction problem. So, I just want to do a little shout out to them and also to this delegation who has moved forward in a very united way to really address the problems. We are an example for the, for the entire state.
Thank you Senator. All right.
Thank you so much. And we have a few funding priorities for substance use and mental health, funding for treatment with an emphasis on youth services and expectant mothers, as well as treatment and awareness of youth suicide prevention.
Mayor, commissioners and delegation members, we'll move on to some of the environmental and natural resource priorities of the county we wanted to share with you today.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me one second. Senator Polsky would like to be recognized.
Thank you Mayor. I wanted to alert you to two important bills that, in this category. The first one that I filed with Representative Honchowski is Senate Bill 164, which decriminalizes the use of fentanyl testing strips. This is a really important harm prevention measure. We can save a lot of lives. It passed the Senate last year and got stuck in the House and so we are more confident than usual that we'll be able to move this, so I hope that you can add that to your list for support and I would love to see everyone here co-sponsor that bill. It, it is really important to save lives. The tiniest drop of fentanyl is absolutely fatal and so we can really make a difference in people's lives if we pass this bill. And the second thing is another bill that is not filed yet, but is in drafting, that relates to help with education for mental health counselors. We've done it for doctors and dentists and nurses and now we need to help fund mental health counselors with loan forgiveness if they work in the public sector, just based on the model that we've used for other medical professionals. And so, every agency I've spoken to says there is a huge lack of mental health counselors. So, that along with, I know Senator Harrell's bill, will hopefully work to solve that problem at least in, you know, several years. So, that one I don't have a number for yet, but we will, I'll let you know once that is done. I think those are two really important bills in this area. Thank you.
Thank you Senator. Representative Edmunds?
Yeah, and I just want to make the county aware of a bill that we have in drafting, House Bill 39, which has the Senate sponsor with Jim Boyd. The central goal is, is to save a couple of lives in our state colleges and universities. Essentially, we require our school police to have at least two cans of Narcan on them at all times so we can save a few lives. So, that's a bill that we're trying to pass through and hopefully we'll get support from the county as well.
Thank you Representative. Senator Powell?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just follow up with the homelessness issue. I know there is a working group, I know the state attorney has been involved with it and I know that's part of this bill that Senator Harrell and Representative Caruso are sponsoring, but we also want to look at perhaps an additional request in terms of funding to deal with some of the population and the recidivism rate. I talked to Rafael Pimento from the West Palm Beach DDA and the idea would be maybe to do some type of court that would allow us to, you know, deal with some of the issues that the population, which is rapidly increasing in the downtown area, to kind of mitigate what's happening there and also to deal directly with the individuals. So, just keep that in mind as we kind of move through legislative session and we'll work together on that.
Thank you Senator. All right, moving on to environmental, national resource, natural resources.
So, briefly Mayor, we just wanted to introduce a few of the legislative items and some appropriation requests that we're working on. Deb Drummer, Director of Environmental Resources Management is joining me as well to go over some of the details of that. You'll see on the screen, one, our support, our, for beach funding, we actually have included $50 million of support. I know the governor's most recent proposal has about $100 million in there, so we support that too and we're excited to work with the governor on that initiative and with the legislature. He's been very, very good about appropriating and recommending to the legislature increases in beach funding. It would equate to about $4.1 million in total funds for Palm Beach County if that's funded. Palmar is an important district in our community. It's up in Commissioner Maria Moreno's area, as well as Senator Harrell's, but this is a district that we have been working to acquire some additional properties in. The county has allocated a number of dollars locally through some of our ARPA funds and we have been acquiring parcel by parcel some of those. We'd also like to see that move up on the state list in terms of its prioritization for additional use of some of our state conservation funds to, to utilize for more purchases of that land. Our Locks River Initiative and our Lagoon, we'll get into the more details on the next slide and I'm going to ask Ms. Drum to go over those, but many of you are familiar with our priorities in those areas over the years. And the appropriations, our Lake Okeechobee Shoreline Restoration of 1.6 million. First off, we're really excited to say that the Herbert Hoover Dyke and the ribbon cutting that some of you were there for is done, but what happens when you put that dyke around that lake is sometimes the integrity internally of some of the natural areas within the shoreline area can be affected. And we're working with the Orme Corps of Engineers right now to see what we can do to help create some additional shoreline restoration, create some more islands and natural habitat, and that's what that 1.6 million dollars is for. The Green Cay Phase 2, I know that some of our legislators have joined me and our Utilities Department as we continue to discuss our world-renowned reuse program here in Palm Beach County, particularly in the south end of the county. Green Cay, many of you know very well, our first phase of that, one of the most popular parks that we have in the county and the country. The $3 million is for a second phase of that that we're looking to do, where we're actually going to create spring-like quality water out of reuse that will funnel into a lake that will help to recharge, you know, the aquifer in that area and it's going to be leading the country in this time, this type of technology and continue to focus on the great reuse program that we have in our community. And then finally, some of the appropriation support for the Corbett Levy, Levy Phase 2. We try to get some money from the legislature. We've got dollars in for some grant funding from the resiliency funds of about $9 million. We hope to get that, but we've included that in here as an insurance policy to work with you in the event that doesn't happen. And then Bush Wildlife Center, one of our partners in the north end of the county, they have a request that's in this year and we're going to do what we can to support some continued funding for their capital that they have at their new facility just off Indian Town Road. And just to the next slide, I'm going to ask Ms. Drum just to go over briefly some of the details of our lagoon and Locks River Preservation Initiative.
Good morning. The initiatives for both the Locksahatchee River Preservation and the Lake Worth Lagoon were served, were created to serve as a forum for a diverse group of stakeholders to exchange information, increase awareness of the health and the future of these environmentally and economically important regions and their resources. The initiatives bring the most informed technical perspectives together, a group of people with knowledge of the, of the water bodies, to identify the highest priority project needs and the associated funding needs. And that's what you have before you today. We do this annually. For the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative, this year's funding request includes five projects with an associated funding request of about $2.36 million and that, along with matching funds, will complete $4.2 million worth of projects. So, I think that demonstrates the strong matching requirement that we have with this list of projects. For the Locksahatchee River Preservation Initiative, this year's funding request includes eight projects with an associated funding request of about $2.49 million and that amount with matching funds will complete just shy of $6 million worth of projects. A big factor for the consideration ranking of these projects is bang for the buck, meaning those projects that provide significant environmental lift and bring a minimum of a 50/50 cost share from local partners. And all of these projects will deliver tangible environmental and water quality benefits to the region.
Mayor and Chair Polsky will pause here if there's any questions or discussion on our natural resource and environment issues.
Representative Caruso.
Thank you Mayor and thank you Administrator Valerian. I had a couple of questions, if I, if I could.
Go ahead.
Thank you. One, I'd ask the commissioners and the county to, to support a bill that I'm running this year with regards to septic tank inspection and maintenance. We all know that the, the communities along the Lake Worth Lagoon, many of them, they're, they're old and they're, they're septic tank based and, and it's something I'd like to see phased out and I've, I've provided funding for certain towns to, to convert, but as long as we have septic tanks, my bill calls for inspections of septic tanks that are 10 years or older to be inspected every three, five years and then, and maintained. That being said, if you could get, if we could get support for that, I'd appreciate that. The other one is, I'm wondering, and it's a question, I was wondering if the county has put any consideration into prioritizing the purchase of sensitive submerged lands in, in the Lake Worth Lagoon area, et cetera?
So, yes Representative, we have included the, the prioritization of submerged lands along with the Palmar lands that were referenced earlier for willing seller acquisition. And so, we are currently pursuing those opportunities. We do have some revenue replacement funding available to do that and we are pursuing that currently. So, we have that now and we will continue to do that because we do recognize the sensitive submerged lands that you're talking about countywide and we do feel that there are some lands that need to be protected.
It's great to hear, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there other questions on this, on these items? Well, I want to thank you for your presentation and we will move on. We have a few minutes left and Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Just a few items on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Number one, on, on reentry, so we always support efforts that provide resources to ensure successful reentry into the regular workforce. About 1,200 approximately per year are coming into Palm Beach County trying to reenter the workforce. Our Restore Reentry Program has been a huge success in trying to help them do just that. For certificates of public convenience and necessity, the, the county is, is responsible for promoting the development and maintenance of safe, healthy, efficient and service-oriented transport. This is for basic and advanced life transport. Our county has an emergency medical services ordinance that establishes standards for issuing COP, CNs and we would for the, for the, for purposes of, of safety and we think we've been a responsible steward in issuing those. We'd like to continue without any preemption of, of taking that responsibility away from the county. On the issue of building codes, following Surfside, Palm Beach County, our officials, we worked with the Palm Beach County League of Cities in preparing a program of inspections going forward, just in case the state legislature did not proceed with that. However, in their special session, they did, so we are happy to continue to monitor the progress of that. We will, we will look for any legislation that might require any additional inspection requirements for multifamily condominium facilities or any efforts to delay implementation of inspections or, or delay the implementation of sprinkler requirements. I would imagine that some of our condo associations have come to you about some of the required financial responsibilities that they now see, so we will also monitor any legislation that would affect those required financial responsibilities.
Moving on to adult guardianship and oversight, this is an issue that has now been placed on our agenda as well this year. Last year, the legislature passed a bill to create a statewide guardianship database for judicial guardianship proceedings and also required that certain information about guardians be posted on a publicly accessible website. So, to ensure the protection of those who are unable to care for themselves, the county does support any legislation that will increase transparency regarding existing guardianships in Florida and the protection of wards from fraud and abuse. And this is something that is important to Commissioner Woodward, if you have any other comments that you want to add. And I know Representative Caruso also has filed a bill on, on this exact issue.
Yes, thank you. I'm, just briefly, this is, this was brought to my attention and, and several friends, specifically when guardianship is tied to
when guardianship is tied to an attorney who's working to get the guardianship, and I had two instances brought to me where the attorney and the guardian were under a similar umbrella, not the same company, but they were working together, and that kind of lends towards predatory behavior against our seniors who are very vulnerable at this point, and it's, you know, tapping into their retirement and their homes, even to the point of having some couples divorced so that their assets could be divided, two new attorneys, two new guardianships. It's a way to just kind of quickly put them in a very bad situation and at a very vulnerable time in their lives. So, this was something, anything you can do to increase this, especially when it comes to attorney relationships with the guardians, to increase this transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. And Representative Caruso, and then Senator Berman.
Well, I forgot I had it up, but I will make a comment. You know, we need to protect our community's most vulnerable individuals, and that's elderly that are, you know, just dealing with the issues of dementia and things like that. My bill that I have filed this year deals with professional guardians and puts the burden on, instead, right now, the guardian can restrict, guardians can restrict visitation by family members based, and solely determine that they either, you know, want visitation or will allow visitation for the ward or not. And what my bill does is it, it makes it, the base of the issue becomes that they are allowed to unless the guardian can go to court and prove that it would be in the adverse to the ward. So, it switches, it switches the priorities back to the court and away from the ward, I mean, away from the guardian, the professional guardian.
Thank you, Representative. Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Woodward, I am working with the Florida Bar. We're probably going to file a pretty big bill about guardianship this year, so I would be happy to work with you on some of those issues going forward. It's still in drafting, but it looks like it's going to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, let's move on. We have still a few minutes left.
Great. So, moving on, you heard about our Restore Reentry Program, $500,000 request to provide case management and support services to offenders reentering our community. And lastly, we have the appropriations request for the Palm Beach County Juvenile Detention Assessment Center. This center opened in 1998 and provides 24/7 one-stop intake and assessment, and assessment center for youthful offenders who are entering initially into the juvenile justice system. The facility has fallen into disrepair and needs a lot of refurbishments, and so, the funding that we're seeking is included in the Department of Juvenile Justice's legislative request for this year, so we're hopeful that we can secure that funding for this facility.
Thank you. Is that, that wraps up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What, we're going to have, we have, if there's, are there, oh, yes, Representative Skidmore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just briefly wanted to mention some legislation that falls within these categories. Two pieces of legislation that are filed on behalf of State Attorney Ehrenberg's office, human trafficking that Senator Berman and I are working on, pretrial release clarification that Senator Polsky and I are working on, risk protection orders expansion, which after today's announcement that we are going to be a permitless carry state, is even more important than ever, and continuing education for guardians, which DOEA can do as a rule, but it hasn't, and so, I have legislation in drafting that would require them to do that. So, I just wanted to put those out into the universe and ask for your assistance on them.
Thank you. Representative Edmonds?
Yes. I wanted to know if it would actually be possible to make a request for a funding for a particular department in the county. I would love to support the Criminal Justice Commission that you all have. I think it's an organization that's second to none. I think we're one of the counties that have it in the state of Florida, and in particular, they have a few programs that I think have been successful but underfunded and potentially cut out. They have the Second Look Program, which was amazing, looking at offenders who have low-level crimes and see if we can reduce their penalties. Also, the Community Court, basically those who, again, have nonviolent offense, they had a pathway to a particular court system that didn't involve going to prison. I know we did it maybe over a decade ago, and we just lost funding for it, but I would love to see that as an appropriation come over to our office at least.
Thank you. Representative Caruso, I hope you're going to tell us about your House Bill 269.
I was. I thought it would be remiss if we did not address, address the increasing acts of antisemitism that are, you know, been in, and taking place in Palm Beach County. They're unacceptable. We cannot stand for this, and shouldn't be tolerated to any degree. I proposed a bill, and that's HB 269. I hope that everybody can get behind it. You know, what it does is it, it takes, takes any act of a religious or ethnic animus and makes it illegal, steps it up to a third-degree felony when it takes place in conjunction with a, another crime. For example, right now, we have had projections of Nazi swastikas on the AT&amp;T Building in West Palm Beach. Currently, nothing illegal about that at all. The projection of any image onto anybody else's building is not illegal, much less a Nazi swastika and a Jewish antisemitic hate message. What my bill does is it makes it illegal to project anything upon a building that you don't own, that you, or that you do not have permission from the owner in writing in order to project anything. So, whether it was a hard on Valentine's Day that you wanted to project on the AT&amp;T Building, if you don't have written permission from AT&amp;T, then it makes it a first-degree misdemeanor that if, should you project that onto the building. However, should you project a Nazi swastika specifically, or antisemitic message onto an AT, onto the AT&amp;T Building, or any building, without the written permission of the owner, it would step it up to a third-degree felony, subject to five years in prison and a $5,000 fine. It, so, we are, we have taken in consideration our First Amendment rights. If you own the building, you are, you are allowed to project anything you want on your own building. However, if it's somebody else's building, and you don't have written permission, you're not allowed to do that. And it goes into other issues with regards to distribution of pamphlets with hate messages. It goes into other areas such as harassment and desecration of religious cemeteries and things like that, and steps all the, it makes them a hate crime and makes it a third-degree felony. So, I know that nobody on this panel tolerates that kind of behavior or supports that kind of behavior. I hope everybody can get behind it on this panel, send letters to leadership in Tallahassee to the governor in support of the bill. I've got, I think just yesterday, I received over 600 petitions in support of the bill from individuals in the county, and they're, they're coming in every day, all day long, so hopefully, we'll be able to turn thousands of petitions into the governor in support of HB 269. I hope every member in the legislature here gets behind it and co-sponsors the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. All right, we are, Representative Roth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Representative Caruso, for that. I'll make it very quick. I think the commission is aware that I am submitting a bill again this year. It's already been filed. It's HB 399. It's called Food Recovery. As we all know, Palm Beach County is the epicenter for why we should explode and quadruple the amount of food that is donated into, into the food recovery system. We call food banks. We have 1.5 million people. We have 20% of those are food needy. We have food production in Palm Beach County. We're the largest county east of California, $400 million of vegetables, and we have the Palm Beach County Food Bank. So, we have a great opportunity, and we also have another thing called philanthropy. So, the idea is we should be able to grow the food bank networks and be able to grow the amount of food, and have the legislature, you know, be willing to put money into a program that I'm, that I'm sponsoring called Food Recovery, and I'll be happy to talk to any of y'all about that, and I'm looking forward. Talked to Jamie Kendall. I love the new facility. I was just there two months ago. It's amazing. Palm Beach County Food Bank is on the move. Thank you very much for your efforts. Let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. All right, so, I just want to go ahead. This concludes our, oh, Commissioner, no, sorry.
No problem. Thank you. I know this is what the county wants to talk about, but I also don't want you to forget that there are over 7,500 nonprofits in our county that need your help, and we do support local initiatives from many of those nonprofits. As a matter of fact, Bush Wildlife is on the list here, but there are so many others, and they do so much good work, like the El Center for Autism, and they are looking for dollars, whether it's matching dollars or just straight-out, straight-out support. So, I do request that you take those, those submissions quite seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Well, this concludes our joint workshop with the legislative delegation. I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners, my colleagues. I want to thank our members of our legislative delegation for your time this morning, and we all look forward to a very successful and productive session, and look forward to seeing you all on March 7th and 8th up in Tallahassee for Palm Beach County Days.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a great day. This meeting is adjourned.